I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for March 14, 2023. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Paul.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Tralca.
Here.
Layland.
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, is the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to make public comments that is not an agenda item? Seeing none, is there anyone online? Excuse me, anyone on Zoom? Seeing none. Moving on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
We have several large payments being paid today. We're paying for two sheriff's vehicles and the total is about $60,000 for those. We are paying for some Cedar Valley Nature Trail construction. Total payments, about $200,000 with that. And our total bill payments today are $572,997.15. Total payments from the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund are $7,659.57. Everything appears to be in order.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Michelle? If none, please answer as your name is called.
Paul.
Yes.
Little. Little?
I don't look like he was gone.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralca.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I wanted to share with you briefly some information I presented last evening to the Farm Bureau. I have given you all a handout. Supervisor Layland, you received the handout last night. And Supervisor Little, I just emailed it to you. Anyway, I just wanted to take five minutes to explain what this is because I don't think I've talked about the all systems permit with you exactly. But the all systems permit was created by the Iowa State Legislature last spring. And as you are aware, there are a number of oversized overweight permits that are available to carriers throughout the state of Iowa. This all systems permit was created to allow for unlimited trips on all city and county roads and all state DOT routes except the interstate, except those routes that have been designated as not, as being restricted. The permit costs $500. Like I said, it's available through the Iowa DOT. There's information on their website. This first sheet I've given you is directly off the DOT website. It gives information about the all systems permit. What it does, it basically allowed the governor's fall harvest proclamation to become a permanent, to become permanent. So that does allow for our most commonly loaded vehicles, five axle, six axle, seven axle. It does allow for those weights to now be 12% higher than they were before. I just wanted to present this to the Farm Bureau last evening and tell them that not all of our routes are accessible to them with this permit, that they must go to the Iowa DOT website. And there's the most current issue, the most current, up-to-date copy of what routes are available. If you look on the second map, that shows which of our routes in Blackhawk County are accessible to these carriers by using the all systems permit. All the green routes are accessible to them and all the red routes are not. This includes about 80, 85% of our routes, including our gravel road system, as being accessible to them with use of this permit. However, it's only about 40% of our bridges at this time. As I've told the Farm Bureau and other farmers, for example, we still need to load rate a number of our bridges to find out what the load carrying capacity of those bridges are. At this time, we're not comfortable allowing, excuse me, 100% of our bridges to be, to carry these loads. And we, frankly, we probably never will be because we will always have some bridges that need to be, that are posted and that will need to be replaced. That's the life cycle of our bridge, bridges here in the county. So if you have any, any questions about the permit, please let me know. I'm happy to inform you. The third sheet is some information I presented to any state legislature who would listen to me last week when I went to the, a number of the county engineers went to the Capitol last week to, just to discuss the all systems permit with them. We, of course, are concerned about this increase in loading being on the roads and bridges. And then finally, I presented the five-year plan to the Farm Bureau last evening, the current five-year plan. So if you have any questions about any of this, please give me a call.
I do have a couple of questions, real quick. Just to better understand, what are the determining factors on the restricted routes and the non-restricted routes?
So like I said, primarily in this county, it's been the bridges that are controlling. So we, we wanted to go by segments. So we go from like intersection to intersection is what our segments are. And most of the time, the red route has a restricted bridge on it. And the bridge being restricted, it could be posted. It can't handle these legal loads either before this law passed or now that the law has passed, we know that the bridges can't handle these new loads. Or we haven't determined that the bridges can handle these new legal loads. So we need a structural engineer to do that, that inquiry, that load rating, as we call it, to go through that paperwork exercise on these bridges and get back to us that this bridge can carry these new loads. In the meantime, we're not allowing these loads to care, to go on these bridges.
And then my next question is, are the, are the rates, are those determined by the legislation or are they determined by the office?
Those late rates, excuse me, were determined by the legislation. Those were what was traditionally allowed during the governor's proclamation for the harvest time, to allow them to go 12%, to be 12% more loads, higher loads. So that's what the legislature adapted.
Okay.
There was a lot of good discussion at that meeting too about that particular item. So we'll, all your items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Yolando Lovelace, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. Just one quick note, this Thursday, we're going to start our veteran lunches as we start to increase our outreach. We're going to do this lunch in the chapel at Pinecrest, just based off the weather. But it's just getting us back acclimated and letting our veterans know that we care. And so we are going to provide lunch. We did look at three options. We looked at Hanson's, we looked at Hy-Vee, and we looked at Chick-fil-A. And the cheapest was Chick-fil-A. So we're going to go with Chick-fil-A. It's always been a big hit. But in April, we're going to probably use like Hy-Vee or Hanson's or some other place that will provide the food in that standpoint. So we're not providing the food in this. But just out there doing good, good things. Then secondly, we're seeing an increase in our foot traffic of veterans and it's based off of the partnership that we have with the outpatient clinic. We're starting to see the five doctors at the outpatient clinic take on the PACDAC. And if they're evaluating a veteran and they see a veteran that needs to apply for benefits, they're sending them over to our office. So I just wanted to take my hat off to the outpatient clinic over there because that's the, that exemplifies the teamwork that we're supposed to have between the servicing care facility and the benefits affairs office. So we're starting to see that and we're, I guess, we're appreciative that we've established that partnership in that standpoint. But other than that, just standing by to address any questions or concerns that you may have. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation. Because we're paying some big bills, I thought I'd give you an update on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Just to let you know where we are, the box culvert work, and we're doing the structures on Division One, box culvert work is coming to an end. The only little faux pas they had last week with the heavy rains a couple of weeks ago, one of the wing walls that was deemed sound actually fell. And so they had to go backwards and we're going to, they're going to have to rebuild that, repour it. It didn't involve a change order. They're going to adjust the, the material quantities in the end of the project. So we're clear to keep moving there. So it wasn't a big issue. So then on to the bridge, which is the big part of that, that section of the trail. And so last Wednesday, they drove piling for the west abutment. They then poured the west abutment on Friday and they will test the concrete for, to make sure it meets strength requirements. If they, if it does, then this week they'll go ahead and set the concrete beams and then that will allow them to start building and placing the decking. So they're moving very, very quickly with this bridge. And the decking then, of course, will be poured concrete. So that will go at a fairly rapid pace. So these guys are moving right along, so just.
Do you have any idea on timeline?
They're telling us that they could be out of there in May.
Okay.
Yep. Have the structures done. So then we'll go out for bid for the paving.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Any department heads or elected officials online? And I will alert you, Mr. Veder, that Mr. Little's back online. Moving on to item five, minutes approved for March 7, 2023.
So moved. Second?
And moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. We have a hearing scheduled for late today on the proposed adoption of a resolution establishing the total maximum property taxes for fiscal year '24. Item seven, consent agenda. The following items will be acted upon on a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And there is only one resolution. If no one has questions, I guess, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item eight, reports. Updates from Ben Delagardel Doing Businesses as Urban Services regarding the Washburn Sanitary Sewer.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
Ben Delagardel, Urban Services, updating for Washburn Sanitary Sewer. I always hate to say it, but we've had a very quiet winter. December 2022, we had zero service calls and one utility locate. January '23, three service calls, two utility locates. February '23, zero service calls and two utility locates. Update you on these because the, these are the variable cost things. When we have service calls, we usually involving a couple thousand dollars worth of repairs and pump rebuild stuff. So we want to keep our inventory up. This is the stuff that really affects the cost, the yearly cost and budget. So my goal, I guess, is to reduce service calls. In '22, our average was three per month. We had about 36 service calls. And in the last three months, we've averaged fairly low on that. So we've got one per month on average. And summer doesn't really, for service calls, it doesn't really mean that we're going to have more because it's a nicer route. But the utility locates, we do have a lot more. So I'm seeing more of those start here in March. People wanting to get out and do the underground service work that they need to do out there. So in March, I still need to do some influence samples and pre-deradon samples for our April sewer discharge from the lagoon. And the only other thing I have to update you was I did have a couple days' worth of conversations with the health department here in Blackhawk County, or I guess a representative from them, and then some realtors that are trying to do some property transfers in Washburn. So unique situation with Washburn is that all of the houses used to have septic tank systems. And in Iowa, according to code, those systems have to be either inspected. And since we have a sewer system there, they have to hook up to the system. It's kind of a process that's always been true since the system was installed, but it always, hasn't always been true that the system had to be disconnected completely. So I'm trying to get the word out to the realtors that houses in Washburn need to have a time of transfer inspection done. And then at that time, the health department would tell them, instruct them that the system, if it's still active, needs to be inactivated. Usually that's, the sewage is pumped out of there and then the tank is crushed or removed completely and filled back in. So we had some realtors unaware of that. So I answered some calls for a couple days there, just kind of had some conversations back and forth. I think everyone's on the same page now with that, but I don't know that, since Washburn is such a unique area, that all realtors know that. So I may at some point need to, and this is beyond my own terms, meet with realtor group from the area that would hear the information. So I haven't heard back from that, them on that, but we just want to make sure that when a property is transferred, the legal process is followed to do a time of transfer inspection and then follow-up, the health department would follow-up and inspect that that had been eliminated from use.
So you did, go ahead. I was going to say, so you are saying you reached out to them?
They reached out to me. I answered questions and then it became kind of, like I said, a couple days' worth of phone calls back and forth, which was perfectly fine. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, so.
Well, that's what I meant, the board of realtors. You talked about maybe making a, I guess, a group presentation.
Yeah. The realtor that I had spoken with was going to kind of try and escalate that. Maybe I go to a luncheon that they have and then just have a 10 or 15-minute presentation with information. I would do this on my own. I know quite a bit about the septic system situation in Iowa and obviously sewers. So just having that knowledge out there for realtors would be helpful. And it does apply to other communities, so it would, it would help other communities, not just Washburn, so.
Oh, that'd be great, I think. Appreciate that.
Yeah. I don't know if they're moving forward with that or interested, but it would be something that would be beneficial to, I guess, anyone in Iowa, but local realtors for Washburn specifically.
Does that typically have to be done by the buyer or the seller too?
Uh, well, so the buyer, the seller usually pays for that to prove that their house is legal. There's documents, of course, of, I can't think of it right now, it's some kind of groundwater quality survey that they fill out. So they have to say yes or no, there is a septic system on site. And you can't just be negligent about that or, yeah, say, I don't know and no. So you have to know for sure that there's not one there. So usually we know, obviously, in rural areas, there's probably going to be one if there's not a town close by. But since Washburn is, it used to be septic systems and that, or, yeah, septic systems and now it's a complete city sewer, that has changed over the years. So, and at first, we actually helped with inspections, I think in 2008, to try to clarify sump pumps going into septic tanks and try and sort out a lot of confusion about what happened when the system was first installed. So it's kind of continuation of that, but I wanted to mention it since it was, I guess, just kind of my platform. I don't get to, you know, speak too much to wide variety of people, but if there's realtors out there selling homes in Washburn, it does need to go through the time of transfer process. And that can be very quick because some of the houses that have been transferred, the health department has documents that can help clarify that and it's an easy done deal. But if it hasn't been transferred and it hasn't been taken care of, then it can become a little bit expensive, but usually the buyer takes care of all that. So, or I'm sorry, excuse me, the seller would take care of all that.
Ben, I got a question. That system's been in for, what, 30 years? And we're just, I mean, the county addressed that when we first put that system in. And I, this is the first I've ever heard of it in, since I've been on the board, so.
Yeah.
Why is this coming out?
Yep. So system was installed in 1999, so '24. I feel like it's been 30 years, but, so the Iowa code has changed since then as well. So at the time, time of transfer wasn't a code of Iowa, it was kind of a theory. And we know now more about health effects of sewage water getting into ditches. And it is a continually changing thing. So I would say back in 1999, we, I wouldn't say we, the people in place at that time allowed the septic systems to still be used because imagine yourself in 1998, spending $6,000 on a septic system and then a year later, DNR, EPA, and the county come in and install a sewage system and you're no longer allowed to use the brand-new septic system that you've used. So the theory was that they were going to leave a wash machine water, some shower water, go to the septic system that was believed not to be bacteria-ridden, I guess, and needing to be treated before it entered the ground. But now in Iowa, gray water also counts as black water. There's really no such thing as gray water anymore. So all of it needs to go through a proper treatment process and that's just for the health of everyone. But it has definitely changed since then. So in 2008, I had help from the Waterloo Inspection Office to inspect sewer, the sewer piping inside the home, the discharge, to try to, first of all, eliminate sump pumps which lower the life of the pumps that we have and cause more service calls. And then also determine if they're still using the old septic system. And I don't even believe at that time that we were requiring them to remove that system at that time. So time of transfer is, is a new, up-and-coming thing. It's been a thing for a while, but really not, I would say all the counties in Iowa are not super on board. Blackhawk County, for time of transfer inspections, takes care of, I want to say 15 counties, surrounding counties, because they don't have a health department that either tracks that or can keep up with all of the things that need to happen with that. And I think the health department here has the structure in place to, to do all the GPS mapping and the, the recording of, of all the in-depth details that need to be kept, so.
The notice we sent out in 2008 was strictly for illegal hookups inside the home pumping gray water to our grinder pumps because they were burning the pumps up. To my knowledge, we weren't doing any inspections on the septic. And we do have another area that I've dealt with over the years, our Raymar addition. And that law changed a long time ago for the sewer and the homes at that time that I dealt with, and we're talking seven, eight years ago, they had to change their system before the house could be sold. And it was quite expensive, so.
Yep.
This has been going on for a while, so it's really nothing new. I don't, I don't, I guess I'm just confused on what's changed all of a sudden.
Yeah. I think, to summarize, I guess, like I said, it's not something brand-new, but things are changing over the years. And I don't see a whole lot of houses for sale very frequently in Washburn. I think people seem to stay there. There is one for sale right now, but there are some that have certainly followed the correct process, so don't get me wrong on that. I think there's just some, some either individuals or homeowners that either try to get around it or realtors that just don't know that process, which is surprising. I think it should be more common knowledge, but definitely in the spirit of helping everyone, I guess, I, I just wanted to mention that I had answered questions about that. So with the inspections we did in 2008, yes, it wasn't specific for the septic systems, but we were taking a look at whether they had one pipe going to the sewer and one going to the septic, or if it was just one discharge going out. At that point, we weren't super serious about making people eliminate their septic tanks, I don't think, so.
Does that address your questions, Tom?
Yeah, it's, this is the first I've heard about this, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good. Thank you.
Great. We probably might as well stay there, it looks like. Yeah, I was going to say, item A under contract, so agreements is the discussion.
Okay.
New contract between Blackhawk County and Ben Delagardel Doing Businesses as Urban Services LLC for Washburn Sanitary Sewer operator fees, with fee increases that include an increase in the base fee from $1,617.20 to $1,900, which is a 17.5% increase per month. And that, and increases in hourly rates for various other services as outlined, as well as allowing for subsequent annual adjustments based on the CPI plus 1% annually. I'm assuming you're probably going to review some of that with us today?
Well, I didn't bring it with me. I didn't know exactly what questions would be asked, but I did send information a while back about every, every, I guess, portion of this contract with a PowerPoint presentation. And I was hoping that you guys had time to review that and ask questions as needed.
I have to be honest, I have not.
Okay.
And Michelle resented.
Yep.
I was on vacation last week, but I said, I know she resented for that very reason, that, to review it again. So I have not seen that 30-minute video yet.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's lengthy. I spent a lot of time looking at more other, I guess, other options for you, since that's not something I expect you guys to know how to do. You wouldn't really even know what to look for other than, hey, what's a sewer guy cost? So with the in-depth portion of pump service calls and looking at the savings that we have in other places, I do always make decisions based on what's the best return on investment for citizens of Washburn and their, their cost. This is the rate that I came up with in a business situation. And I also, I guess, just with this mention, would mention that there are other communities competing for my services. And I wouldn't ever think of going anywhere else and discontinuing the service, but this is where I'm at business-wise, so.
Could you summarize, I guess, would it be fair to ask you to summarize the increase and the, explain a little bit of how you arrived at that?
Yeah, so the exact details are in the PowerPoint that I sent, but I had an hourly rate for on-call, I think it was a dollar and a half, somewhere around there, per hour, which I kind of analyzed against other places where employees are on-call for their work. I know that, you know, that's, it's a common thing to have someone be on-call. And then my insurance costs, I've actually risen from the original contract that we've, we've been using for the last 23 years. The terms of that portion have increased and caused a little bit more cost for me to have the umbrella coverage. And that's something I can also, you know, I can offer, but wasn't part of the original That's all a portion, a part of the 1,900 per month was the hourly.
The fuel cost.
Well, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't technically have a fuel cost involved. That's kind of just in with, with my hourly. I don't have a service call charge. I just charge hourly. A lot of places have a service call charge. So this 1,900, when you pay me for being on-call hourly, I just disregard any type of service call cost, fuel cost, vehicle cost. I do start the clock from when I leave home to when I get there, but it's always within that two-hour timeframe. A service call's right around two hours, unless I have major problems, it could become more, but I try and keep that in the two-hour range. As far as the 1,900, it also includes storage of your inventory, so old inventory that needs to be rebuilt and new inventory that is available for replacement of the, a service call pump. So when I get a service call, it's, it's always a, you know, a light on and always requires a pump change of some kind. I haven't found very many frequently, very frequently that I get a service call and don't change a pump. So we keep around 12 to 15 pumps available. We did have, I think in 2008 during the ice storm, we had around 10 we changed at that time. Power came back on and caused a surge of some of the parts in the pumps and caused those outages. So as far as hourly, it's just a rate increase. We haven't had one since 2020. It's a little bit larger this time, but like I said, analyzing business, I've got more costs in, in vehicles. I take care of all the vehicle costs underneath my hourly rate and training costs. There's a lot of like this, I don't charge, a lot of things I don't charge you for. Talking to the realtors, every day I monitor the, the Iowa on-call locates, they come in as emails. They used to be faxes, but now they're emails. So, you know, I use my personal email for that and they come in occasionally. I might get an email actually every day to confirm that there were the quantity. So usually it's zero, but I will get those via email and, and carry out those duties. So I also don't charge you for every single locate that we get, only ones that I act on. So there are some that I get and analyze and it's wiped aside because it's not in a location where our utilities are, so.
You mentioned vehicle costs.
Ben, you operate the Fairbank system, don't you?
Well, yes, I work for the City of Fairbank full-time. They allow me to have a free schedule so that I can respond if needed. And then I also, on my time away from there, I take care And then I also, on my time away from there, I take care of your monitoring and operations. But in Fairbank, I am not the main operator. My main operator for Fairbank is my dad, Brian. He's the water and wastewater operator. I do have the licenses available for my operation of Fairbank, but it's basically just treated like a full-time job. So this is aside from Fairbank, obviously completely separate. But yes, I have duties for wastewater in Fairbank.
That is a full-time job?
It is.
Yeah. The Iowa first-one calls you talked about, is this still in the contract? You get $50 per call?
No, nope. I charge a half an hour if I go to inspect. And then if I get out and use paint, flags, hook up everything, it's one hour standard that I do.
How much time do you think you average in Washburn doing your duties?
How much time? Well, I'm pretty sure that my billing is accurate. I can, I can count up the past hours, but the, I had sent an example in the email, don't have it in front of me, apologize for that, but I had summarized the past 12 months, and then I summarized 12 months to 24 months. So we have two years' worth of hourly charges. And those should be accurate. And what we did was I averaged the past two years' hours, say I spent X hours on service calls, average of two years, and that's what we put in the budget for what it will cost my services for 2024, or, excuse me, 23.
Well, one thing I've noticed is with Mr. Delagardel, whenever there is a problem, he doesn't bring us the problem and drop it in our lap. He brings us a solution to that problem every single time.
I do have a question on the vehicles.
Yeah.
You mentioned the vehicle costs. What vehicles are involved with that?
I have a flatbed pickup truck. It's a dually truck that I haul tools, a generator, pumps, hoses, a bunch of stuff on. And then I have a trailer. It's a hydro vac trailer. It was an acquirement that I had in October 2021, and I began using because I explained in my video that these pits, over 23 years, have gotten solids in them, rocks at the bottom of the tank, obviously fluid that need to be pumped out. And what I was doing before, I was using a, basically a sump pump and pumping it into a tank, 100-gallon tank, and taking that to the lagoon. It would be about four trips there. So this hydro vac allows me to, a four-inch vacuum, to vacuum out all the contents in one trip, take that to the lagoon during a service call. And then one thing that we benefit from is that all of those contents are then removed, so we don't have those contents creating problems with the new pump that I put in. So I feel like this is a better solution, could help drive down service calls and reduce costs in the future. Although it is a little bit more of a cost at the service call time, a single pump rebuild can be between $1,000 and $1,500. So reducing, like I said, reducing the service call cost is really our only angle to reduce the costs in Washburn, unless you were to go to bid with this. And when it comes to Washburn, like I said, every, every single decision that we make is based on cost. And I wouldn't cheap out for something that wasn't gonna benefit us long-term. So I'm offering these vacuum services much cheaper than what I could call someone to do, you know, 30 to 40% of the cost of calling a third party to come vacuum out the contents. So there are many, many things that I bring to the table as far as lowering the cost, but.
And those vehicles and things are used for others, not just us, correct? I mean, as far as any.
Yes, but it's, I would say it's at least 80% Blackhawk County right now.
Thank you.
Michelle, this, this increase would come out of just trying to think through budget and all that.
Yeah, so we have a separate enterprise fund that we actually haven't talked about as part of our budget because we don't, yet, because we don't file it with the state, but it is a separate Washburn sewer fund.
We're talking about $2,400, is what this comes out to? Is that the increase?
Oh.
Does that sound right?
Per?
No.
It's annual?
It's about 20,000. It's an estimate because the number of calls can change and the kind of services he provides can change, so it could be 20,000 a year. And it honestly, I think we need to revisit the rates.
Right.
As far as I know, it appears rates haven't been increased since this was begun.
Mm-hmm.
I'm very fortunate they've been able to stay this low this long, but I think we're at a point where we probably are gonna have to talk about an increase.
Yeah.
It's difficult because there's only 385 users. It's a small population.
No, that was, that was the part I was gonna bring up, and that's something that I know Ben has brought to us before too, that we need to examine those rates. And I knew the time when we decided to invest the American Rescue Plan money, I said, you know, this, we can't bank on these, you know, being options for us in the future, and we really need to get the rates set so that when a major investment like that needs to be made, whether it's 20 years from now or something again, that we're not just hoping there's another global pandemic that pours money into local government, so.
We had that list out yesterday too, to look at the, I guess, committees or board members that are in that Washburn Sewer Board, because I thought those people can be very helpful too. I don't know if you know, if there are any changes or anything on that, Ben?
Since the time having Craig White down there a couple of years ago, I, I haven't been really in contact with any of those folks down there. And I'm willing to, I just, they're not my governing body for that, you know, I.
I just wondered.
I'm willing to answer questions from them and meet with them if needed or if they're available, but I haven't heard of any meetings happening. There are a couple Facebook groups that I'm a part of that I, I get, I mean, I get Facebook messages for service calls, so very personal with those people. And some of them know me well. I have known them since I've been working over there. So it's a kind of a personal thing, you know? But I do advise them to call the phone number because I'm not always the one on-call. I'll leave town, go on vacation, et cetera, and leave somebody else in charge, so I don't want to get a Facebook message when I'm over in Pennsylvania watching a baseball game or something like that, so.
And I apologize for not looking at your video.
No, that's okay.
I say.
It is lengthy. It does, it does take some time. I know that you guys are busy too, but the amount of information in there, I think, is satisfactory. And if you have questions about that, I can also answer questions outside of this meeting too, so.
Mike, you looked at the contract?
Yes, we've been working on it over quite a few weeks now.
Did you have any comments?
I would also like to say thank you for your work on that.
Did you have any comments, either one of you, Michelle or Mike, to on this particular one? I know we're not taking action on it today. It was just discussion to kind of get all this information out that you've all been working on.
I would say the contract needed a little bit of updating. I'm not gonna comment on the rates, but just the general language of the contract, the insurance requirements.
And we did spend some time going through that and trying to make it more accurate with Ben's business and with how we do business today than when that original contract was signed. So we did look at that, and I've learned a lot about the Washburn sewer system since November 1st, but it's, yeah, I think we're comfortable with the new contract and it will work well for us.
So we can put something, we feel we're prepared to put something on the agenda next week.
I believe we are.
Parties now. There was a question about insurance, but you've.
Yeah, we clarified that, and I'm covered for what the new one is requiring now. So I don't really have too many questions, but I just did want to say thanks for working together on that. It's taken some discussion back and forth. And it's been, like Mike said, I think it needed to be updated to include certain things. We really weren't too many changes, other than insurance, the rates, and then the, I think the hydro vac charge that I have.
Acts of God.
Yeah, something like that was duplicated, just cleaning up of language and bringing that to the 2023 year, so. I don't expect anything to change the way I, the way I handle business and meet with you guys. There is language in there. I'd like to meet with you guys at least six times a year, if not more, and that can include, if there's a committee out in Washburn. But I do plan to include a little bit of education for you guys at these meetings, hopefully just a couple two-minute, two or three-minute things, so that you can kind of know what's going on when I say this word or that word, if you're foreign to the sewer world, so.
And I believe you said in your email, if any of us want to come out.
Yeah, welcome to.
Do that.
You guys own that, and.
I'll reach out to you.
Happy to, happy to give a tour if needed or wanted, just so you're aware, you know, when I say certain things. And it's always nice to have somebody else put eyes on it too, so.
Know what you're talking about.
I try, I try to, most of the time.
You have, no, you do, yeah, that's great. Appreciate your work.
Yep. Any other questions or concerns, Tom?
No, that's good. Thank you very much for everything. In regards to the rates out there, the finance director for the last two or three years have been saying that we do need to readdress the increase out there. We've done it twice since my terms, and it wasn't very popular then, but it is what it is. If we need to raise them, we'll have to raise them.
Yeah, I think it's been a couple of finance directors. I think this has kind of been on our radar that we needed to do it, but it was just like pulling it off and bringing it all together.
The good thing is they paid off the bond, so they're not making double monthly payments due to the bond, so.
I will say that I've noticed from my inspections out there that occasionally we could have some underground repairs that need done. So the manholes that the pumps are in, they're poly, so their plastic and pressure over time has caused some cracks. There's one near a ditch that leaks water in the spring when the snow melts and water's kind of running out of town. Just occasional one to $2,000 things here. I will address those with you guys before those happen, if you want to have somebody else take a look or have that bid. But just plan to have a little bit of funding here and there for an aging system that is gonna need attention, and I think the ARPA funds will help a lot, but there's still, after that, still gonna be more to do in the next 10, 15, 20 years as well.
Yeah, start building that.
Yep.
Ben, what are the pumps costing now?
What's that now?
How much are the pumps costing? Are we still getting them out of the mine?
Yep, Ankeny. And the last one that I purchased was quite a while ago. I think it was around $3,400. And I know they've had at least one price increase since then. So we rebuild with our method. Cedar Valley Pump is my source for rebuilding. We use new pump housings that are manufactured to the specs of the E1 brand, but they're not from E1. Those complete rebuild, all-new electronics are around $1,500 to $1,600. So when we're half the price for all the electronics, we're reusing the wear, the non-wear parts that grind the sewage and the reusable parts. We're doing that for half-price for almost the same unit, so I prefer that. We continue to see our service calls be low. That is also telling me that we're in the right direction with the pump rebuilds instead of spending money on new. I don't know.
You said Cedar Valley's fixing them?
Cedar Valley Pump is fixing, repairing the pumps, rebuilding the pumps, yes.
Is that, is that your dad?
It is.
Cedar Valley?
It is. I have pricing from Iowa Pump Works, the source for these E1 pumps, for brand-new pumps and the rebuild rates. They lean on the side of selling you a new pump, usually. They're salespeople, not service people. So I prefer the cheaper route. It's a little bit easier. The inventory of new parts is at his shop, and I take the old pumps there. He rebuilds them, puts them on a rebuild stack, so I just accumulate the pumps from there and take them to be used in Washburn. So it's a fairly smooth process. If we were to change anything, I would be okay with that, but it would increase travel time and a little bit of control over exact method of rebuilding these pumps, so. The method, they would have a certain dollar amount they would reach with part numbers, and their labor is higher, so you reach that threshold of, okay, if we're gonna spend half the money on a new one to rebuild, we're gonna reach that faster with certain electronic parts inside versus buying a new one. We've reached that threshold, so we can't get a rebuilt pump as swiftly as we can with Cedar Valley Pump, if we're going out outside of the Cedar Valley Pump method, so. That's something that we've, just being in the industry, we've learned to offer that rebuild as part of our services, so. I guess I wouldn't say our, he's a completely separate business. We do business together, but he does the pump rebuilding, so. If it's, if it's your guys' wish that we go somewhere else, or I can take one there and see what, see what it costs to rebuild one, that's completely fine with me. So I'm just in charge of trying to find the best price for you guys, so.
Michelle, I was gonna say, as we prepare for discussions about a possible rate increase, if maybe we could look at what the rate would have been the last five years if we had to use just that money to make this investment we've just done with the American Rescue Plan? It's just to show residents that, because this is the one area of American Rescue Plan money that we have decided to invest in a specific area that doesn't directly have a benefit for the entire public, unless you're visiting someone's home and doing your business there. You know, so it's, I think it's good to, just to demonstrate to the citizens of Washburn that, yeah, we're talking about rate increase, but we just made a significant, particular investment in your community as we're doing that.
I can do that. It'll be significant.
And I assume then the two of you work together to try to determine what that amount would be, that we'd need to do that increase as well?
We'll have to talk about it some more.
I made a suggestion in the video that I sent you, but that is just a suggestion. I would like to see, obviously, cover my rate, and then maybe you do a certain percentage now, and then in one year, we do another certain percentage to build the funds, to look forward to the future. There are communities in Iowa and all across the country that are dealing with new regulation from DNR. There's certain amounts of requirements they have that they can't meet with their current system, and they're spending millions of dollars just right around here to meet the new requirements. And the citizens are having to take care of that. And I think with the lagoon system, it remains fairly safe for Washburn. We don't have any huge industrial contributors. But with that, we also have some new requirements coming in that may be a little bit difficult to meet. So I can't see anything huge coming. I keep that, I keep up on my training, and I don't see anything huge coming for Washburn. But there are communities that don't plan, and they struggle. And their rates are three times what Washburn's paying, and I don't want to get there, but if we plan ahead and we are financially prepared for that, it will never get there, so.
And we knew the balance was quite low right now, current.
I would suspect, Linda, that if we would have had to spend close to a million dollars for that lagoon, there wouldn't have been, increases wouldn't have been high enough to cover it. I mean, we'd be out of, around there, I think we probably would have bonded for it like they did years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Any other questions for Ben or comments?
Thank you.
I think then we'll put it on the agenda next week, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks very much. Item B, discussion, possible board action that the Board of Supervisors approve the expenses related to the Pinecrest digital sign installation, variance fee, and electrical service installation for an amount not to exceed $20,000 with funds coming from building maintenance budget. Hey, welcome back from vacation. It's good to see you. You had a great vacation, and thanks for being here. I know you were sending information even as late as yesterday to kind of get some of the things on, and I appreciated seeing the actual photo of the signage. I thought that was helpful, so thank you.
Yes, morning board, Caitlin Nummer, Blackhawk County Public Health. I only sent the photo to Supervisors Leyland and.
Oh, sure, Mr. Little.
Well, did I send it to? Little, Leyland and Little, because I think what I heard on the recording is that's who had the questions, but I do have a copy.
Oh, good. I was gonna say, I do too. Were there any comments you want to make to it? I know, like you said.
So I just, I just wanted to quick follow-up with a couple of the questions from last week. I had Lisa with me as well, our public health planner, who's been the point person on this project. And first of all, I just wanted to make sure everyone saw the memo that Lisa put together on the ninth with the actual costs of the sign-in sign installation after the Board of Health met to approve the, award the bid for the sign, to nagle signs.
Because that was an increase or something, was it not?
It's actually a reduction.
From earlier, when we'd seen.
Yep, so we had estimated the cost of the sign at $50,000 after seeing the, after opening the bids, and the one that we went with is just over $44,000, so it's a little bit of a reduction of the total cost of the project. The ask for the Board of Supervisors for the use of building maintenance funds is still the same because the electrical service estimate is still an estimate and will be until we can move forward with that. And Rory's really taken the lead on that. And Rory's really taken the lead on that, because that's something that you don't want us to handle. And then I have just a couple of follow-up pieces of information from the meeting last week. So there was a question on the expected life of the sign, and Lisa followed up with Nagel on that. And it looks like the sign manufacturer, which is Watchfire, guarantees replacement of parts for ten years with a five-year parts warranty. And then Nagel Sign also reports that in about ten to twen- ten to twelve years, some customers are wanting to upgrade to newer technology, because there are many displays that are fifteen years or more that are still functional. And then another piece of follow-up information was the picture of the sign. And so that mock-up is what was submitted with the bid, and so we have a little bit of negotiation with that if we need to. But just something to point out is that the list of tenants that is based on the, on the photo that was provided with the bid is not what the final side, sign would reflect, the sign would be manufactured so the names can be updated as needed without replacing the static components of the sign.
Take a motion to approve up to twenty thousand.
Second.
Any questions, I was going to say it's been moved and seconded, there's no further discussion, right? I guess do a resolution?
If, if we have to move it to a different location, I'll just be curious to see if that impacts the warranty and how easy it will be to move.
I think the, the thought process is that the sign would always stay the Pinecrest building sign. So, you know, if departments within the building move, then we could update the sign to reflect the current tenant list, but the sign would be linked to the building. Does that help address your concern?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I could probably add to that, I'm Brian with Nagel Signs here. If, if Nagel would be the, the entity moving the sign, it wouldn't affect the warranty, but I don't under, I don't, I don't. If it would move, I wouldn't see any reason why it would, but if it would, as long as, as long as we're the ones moving it, you know, not a handyman or someone, someone that just randomly taking the sign and moving it, it would be under warranty, yes.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Brian, for being here, Lisa gave me the heads up that you were going to be here, and I forgot, so thank you for speaking up.
No problem.
Thank you, Caitlin, I said, my only, my question was really, and not the twenty thousand dollar amount, because I think we all knew that there was funding probably that could be utilized for that and to support the grant, but was more of a procedural kind of issue in the fact that when we have our departments that come before us with projects and equipment and that type of thing that come in overbid or the cost is higher than what we have anticipated. And we always ask them to look at, into their own budgets for that difference, and if there is places to, that that could be absorbed in other areas. And just wondered, and, and I know some of this became unfair to you probably, or seemed unfair because there were so many questions, but I think it's because we kind of got it at a late time and not the opportunity to interact with you on those.
Sure.
But that was the question I had from a procedural standpoint.
And I, I can certainly see that, and I think, I should also add that, so these, the sign itself is eligible to be purchased with grant funds, but the installation and the electrical service and things like that are not eligible to be purchased with grant funds. And since the sign is to serve everyone that is housed in the Pinecrest building and not just the health department, we started a conversation with Rory about, okay, this is, this is more of a county resource than a health department resource, so it would make more sense for us to work with you, we had to work with the many way on the logistics. And so that's kind of why we approached it from that perspective rather than just the health department budget perspective.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I would think from both departments probably benefit, it would have probably been a good problem to bring to the board and to Michelle, probably as finance director to work out of the best solution, and maybe that would have been the best solution. But rather than departments, I guess determining that there are items in their budgets, my opinion is that it would be a board decision because it's finance.
I see what you mean.
Related. So, sorry, but I just wanted to make sure, to make you clear of that, it wasn't the, that isn't a great project, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's been moved and seconded, and I think it would probably be great to answer with, answer as your name is called, as a resolution, unless someone disagrees.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Moving on to item C, resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received by Hudson Hardware Plumbing and Heating of Hudson, Iowa in the amount of seven hundred and five thousand and eighty-six dollars and ten cents for the purposes of replacing the existing sewage lagoon system at Hickory Hills Park, which will meet the needs of the increased usage of the park in an environmentally conscious manner. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Supervisors and to be funded by American Rescue Plan Funds.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Hendrickson.
Any questions or comments, again, this is the second time we went out for bid for this project as, as we brought to the board. It looks like we're finally going to be able to move this thing forward. We did have another delay when we accepted, after we accepted this bid, and it was simply getting the contractor registered with Sams.gov, which, which is a requirement, but that has now gone through and they meet all the requirements. So this would be the low bid for this project.
Any questions for Mike?
What, what's the timeline?
Timeline, obviously, again, weather is, is a factor, but it could be completed, we hope it will be completed by early fall.
Okay.
No further questions? Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Item D, resolution that the Blackhawk County approve amending the professional services contract with Snyder and Associates, Inc., Cedar Rapids, Iowa, dated December fourteen, twenty twenty-one, for the Hickory Hills wastewater treatment facility improvements project. For construction services to include construction administration, staking, observation. Contract amendment in the amount of fifteen thousand lump sum expenses to be billed hourly not to exceed thirty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Supervisors and to be funded by American Rescue Plan Funds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
And again, then these are construction services, and then we divided that contract up into, into two different sections. The fifteen thousand lumps, dollar lump sum is just for the actual construction administration and staking. And then the construction observation, which is the onsite observing of the contractor as he goes through his work, that is done on a not to exceed the thirty-four thousand, one hundred dollars, so just to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you. As I read it, I wasn't sure either.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, we hope it won't be that much, but it depends on how, how long they have to be on site.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay, please answer as your name is called.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Item ten, other business, resolution to submit to Baker Tilly for evaluation as a possible ARPA-funded project, the Sheriff's Office Remote Work Proposal as amended to exclude from the body, project body cams and related equipment.
Morning board, Al, you IT Director, this is to acquire critical infrastructure equipment for the Sheriff's Office. Answer any questions?
And you mentioned in there promotes the support of social distancing and work flexibility if you, because I think you probably did the questionnaire.
Correct.
Could I ask how?
Essentially, it's the kind of the chicken and the egg, you've got to have the infrastructure to, to have the remote access. There, there are a lot of infrastructure needs that I would like to address on that side, and so this would help us achieve that. This would also affect communication between squad cars and, and dispatch, so.
But the social distancing, I mean, obviously from a COVID standpoint, we're looking at, that it, we're not increasing space or anything in, as far as in those departments or in that office, correct?
Correct, I, I mean, there, there could be as, just deployment for, you know, but as of right now, it's just kind of a replacement, so.
And the county would be inoperable and lead to less remote work flexibility, that's what the term was, correct?
Correct, I, I mean, this, this is, it is critical infrastructure, yep, we might, we, yeah.
One question I do have too regarding that, I know it started as an over a million dollar project. We've reduced that down to six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and I'm assuming that's because of the requirements are a little steeper for the one million dollar projects.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Well, that's part of it. It's more, it's less about the requirements being steeper and more about all the hoops you have to jump through. So if that's what you mean by requirements, yeah, having to go through and do the, and do the renovation for something that's just barely over a million, it seemed like somewhat of an onerous requirement, number one. Number two, the committee had some concerns about the part that was removed from this proposal.
And could you elaborate on those concerns?
Well, specifically, it dealt with body cams and body cam infrastructure, and there was a, kind of an overarching opinion on the committee that this is something that we have anyway. Is that a fair way to put it, Al?
Yeah.
Yeah, Al was there when we met and discussed that.
So when the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars was included, we thought it was needed?
At, at the time, we, we included that because it is, it is part of the infrastructure, but I think that, and that's, that's, that'd be a whole different project for the sheriffs, and I don't know if you guys are addressing it separately with body cams or. Options, okay.
And in fairness, it wasn't that there, I mean, I think, Al, you had seen some cases where this had been approved under ARPA in other locations. So it, you know, the committee exercising its independent judgment thought it seemed like a bit of a stretch to put that under there, especially when it put it into this one million dollar plus category. But it wasn't like there was no basis whatsoever to go with it.
And the reason why it was included before is because the bulk of that cost is due to servers to store all the footage. That is going to be way more expensive component than the actual body cam equipment itself, so.
I guess from, from my perspective, when it comes to American Rescue Plan money, I've got two major projects out there that we're still going to see how they develop, and we need to have a space needs meeting on it. And that would be the, the Elections Office and the Public Health Center, and those are going to come in. And it might be that it's the same location, it's a one building that, that solves all of it, but I, I'm reluctant to spend to, and I know this is just approving it to go to Baker and Tilly, but, but I kind of want to see a slowdown on these larger projects until we get those two major priorities, I think, figured out and have a clear sense of what they're, what they're going, clearer sense of what they're going to cost to make sure that we can, that we can meet those priorities, because we're talking about social distancing needs. You know, there, nothing that the county does impacts that more than at election time when they're all crowded down the halls here and stuff. And so, and, and obviously, we've talked about the needs for the public health clinic for, for a while, and so that, that's, so my opposition to, to this today is just because I've got those two priorities that I think we need to address before we take on too many more projects.
My comment to that would be, we could probably table this, I would think, until later, as far as going forward with the Baker Tilly evaluation, because we do know there's a lot of cost and expense, or costs, but expense in going forward with them, and then whether or not we are able to do the project, so we could delay that a little bit. We did talk about having a finance kind of work session with ARPA projects and those types of things in the near future as well. So that might give us a little more insight, but also, like you said, those building costs and where we're going to be aligning ourselves with dollars. If that would be all right with the board, we could certainly table that one for now and kind of put it in a holding pattern like we have the evidence intake facility until we get a better feel for the project.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do that, okay, thank you, Al, thank you, Mike. Moving on to item B, resolution to approve the opioid settlements with Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens and Walmart, collectively a second part of settlement of the National Opioid Class Action litigation, to authorize the board chair to sign the resolution for same and to authorize the board chair to sign all settlement documents.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Trining.
All right, so the, as I've kind of explained to the board in some email communications, as part of this national opioids litigation, there are numerous defendants, and they can settle at different times. And so our class action attorneys are negotiating with them in groups almost. And we had, I think, a little over a year ago, we had a settlement with a couple of defendants. Well, now they've reached a settlement with five additional defendants. And nationally, you're talking about different amounts for each of these. For example, Teva's supposed to pay three point three four billion dollars over thirteen years. Allergan is supposed to pay two point oh two billion over seven years. CVS, four point nine billion over ten years. Walgreens, five point five two billion over fifteen years. And Walmart, two point seven four billion. And in this case, they said in twenty twenty-three, and all payments to be made within six years, so I'm not sure entirely what they mean by that. But the bottom line is we're talking very big numbers nationally. What you do is you then reduce those down to an Iowa number as to what Iowa gets. And if you look at that email I sent, Iowa receives less than one percent of each of these, but that's still substantial money. And it equals more than a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in, in settlement proceeds for the state of Iowa. Now that gets divided essentially by two, and then the part that goes to local governments gets distributed based upon population. According to our attorney, and again, this gets paid over time according to the form for each of the settling defendants, but over that timeframe, the total amount that Blackhawk County would receive would be over two point two million dollars. And then, and again, that's according to the math of our, of our attorney with Kruger Dickinson, who I corresponded with last week on this issue. Now, in order to take advantage of that, we have a deadline coming up and it's in April, but I'd rather take care of this sooner rather than later in case there's any hiccups in the documentation, we've got a little time to fix it. So what we got to do is we've got to, we've got to pass a resolution similar to what we passed on the prior one, and I sent a copy of the long-form resolution to the board, I think it's enough just to say that we're passing that for purposes of verbal statements today. And then we have to, we have to also execute participation agreements for each of the settling defendants. And these would be electronically submitted after the board resolves to, to enter into those settlements. So I, I think that's a pretty good, high level and a, and a somewhat good local level kind of overview of this because these, literally, there are hundreds of pages of settlement documents, in fact, it might even exceed a thousand. I didn't, I wasn't adding them all up as I looked through them. But the, the bottom line is we're looking at these payments, they have to be used for, for opioid-related purposes. And I know that ISAC is getting ready to give us some guidance as to how to start using those, since we've got a little in our account now from the last two settlements we entered into. So with that in mind, as long as you're not too specific in them, I'd open it up for questions.
No, I think this is a good opportunity, I mean, it's an industry that, that wreaked havoc on, on America, frankly, and if they're, they're getting away with a drop in the bucket for what they, for what they've made, putting this plague on America, but it does provide us a good opportunity to, you know, figure out how we invest that locally. I know we've got, Pathways has a presentation, they're going to be coming to us, I think is really good about, my understanding is that basically keeping a, a place on reserve that people can go to instead of the jail. But the other, if there's, as we look at that option, the, the other place I'd like to see us consider investing part of that is transitional housing and making sure that would qualify, but I think this is a good opportunity for that.
Certainly can look into it, that's what we were wondering about others in addition, I know Tom asked as well about others than, other than Pathways. I sit down, we need to see who that is, and I know the health department's talked about it a couple of times at their board meetings as well, so, great.
Mike, do we have to do a contract like we do with our nonprofits with whoever we go with?
Definitely would, because you're going to want to have clear documentation as to what you've used this for in case there's any auditing of it.
Okay, thank you.
And they explained, I think, just. And they explained, I think, just briefly in their email what they'd be the services. But I think the presentation was going to be where we'd find out more, so, yeah. Thank you.
It's going to be very important to have clear contract documents to make sure that we can show that we use these monies for what they were intended.
I think they just wanted the opportunity for us to just tell us what that would be, so we could go into that. Thank you, Mike. All right. So is the resolution moved and seconded? Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwert.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Item C, motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for an engineer/technician/aid one or two full-time placement, effective March 14. It's been moved and seconded. All in favors. Oh, you want to comment? Kathy?
I sent you an email yesterday. Good morning again, board. As you know, this vacancy came about due to one of our long-term employees passing away at the end of last year. And that's why we've been working with Human Resources. We think this is going to be a difficult position to fill just because engineering/technician aides are very tight. Only about 40 of those people graduate from the two main community colleges that offer these programs in the state of Iowa. So that's why we'd like to advertise it as a tech aide one slash two, just to see what kind of queries we receive, what type of interest we receive. And we'd like to be flexible and work with Human Resources as we go through the process.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion is approved. The time is 10:12, and it is the hearing on the proposed adoption of a resolution establishing the total maximum property tax dollars that may be certified for levy for general county services and the total maximum property tax dollars that may be certified for levy for rural county services. Motion to receive and place on file the proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year '24 budget, proposed total maximum property tax dollars that may be certified for levy for general county services and total maximum property tax dollars that may be certified for levy for rural county services.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Item three, motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Veder, were there any written comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Whedon here.
You're a president. Would like some comments? Only good ones. We can do that. Of course, I'm back to... Here we go. The one I wanted to see is not here anymore. It was here earlier. I thought I would start out first with what we are actually... What I'm asking you to approve today. As you know, you've made a number of decisions since the time that we set the maximum date of hearing or maximum levy date of hearings. So today, we're voting on higher tax askings and higher increases than what we will be asking you to vote on when we come to our final hearing. So how we got there today, I'm showing the general basic levy having an increase of 1.46% in tax askings, the general supplemental of 1.63%. So the total general tax askings of $31,881,517. That's a 1.49% increase in collections over fiscal '23. Then for the other levy that's included in this hearing is the rural basic levy. And we are showing that at $3,687,840 or a 9.82% increase over the fiscal '23 levy. So our total tax askings that we're approving today would be $35,569,357, an overall increase of 2.29%. And we can look at what that means in terms of tax increases here.
And again, for the public and the press, this isn't what the final budget is. This is just a loophole that the state legislature found necessary a few years ago.
An extra step.
Yes.
Or a ring of fire, whatever it is.
One of those. And the other thing I will mention is, this hearing I prepared using the original valuations that were provided to us by the state. As we've all talked about, the state did pass a new law changing that right about the same time that we were setting this. But I... We already had this far enough along that we left it at the original valuations, which will also change who pays how much of the pie when we certify the final. So this walks us through the total tax askings. And this does have the debt service levy in it, even though we don't approve that at this hearing. So this would have been what our total taxes would have been had we not made any adjustments after that. So we would have had a total tax rate of $9.37 roughly, an increase of 20 cents. And for residential property, it would have been a 3.88% increase in taxes. Rural residential would have seen 6.72%. And commercial and industrial would have declined by almost half a percent. Ag property would have increased 5 1/4%. And then multi-residential, which I'll be glad, and we can stop talking about multi-residential next year, had a reduction of 11.79%. So those are the documents that we're approving today. And if you would like, I am happy to go through the... Just kind of review briefly the changes we made since that time.
I think that'd be helpful because I think that's... Yeah, like I said, that was the max, but we're not at the max.
No, we will not. We will not be approving that at our next hearing. So the adjustments that we have made are on this worksheet. If you recall, the rural libraries had requested a 10% increase in funding. We reduced that to 6%. That is paid from the rural levy, so you can see in that column on here, it is in the rural levy column. The compensation board recommendations for elected officials were brought to zero, so I made those adjustments on the next line. That's a reduction of $192,000 roughly in the general fund and about $7,259 in the rural fund. Then we made a number of changes to capital requests that took a while to chase around. There are several projects, re-epoxying the showers at the jail, replacing an overhead door at the jail, adding security grading in the jail, and that we're all moving to be paid from the commissary fund. So that is being taken off property taxes and being paid another way. The painting in the attorney's office, we again took off property taxes, and we'll pay for that with the Attorney's Fine Collection Fund. We moved the VA concrete work out of property taxes, and we'll be applying for ARPA funding with that. Then I realized, as I learned more about how the 60-40 fund works, that I was still counting the deputies in our property taxes. So I've removed those because one of those is paid from the 60-40 fund and one is paid from the Attorney's Fine Collection Fund. That's $192,000. We also talked about reducing the deli renovations. We were going... Building maintenance had asked for $10,000 to renovate that space. Reduced that by $7,500 to $2,500 to just replace the key fobs or add key fobs to that door. Then I just... Once I know the tax rate, I kind of trued up, I call it, the business property tax credit and other replacements because those are dependent upon your tax levy, how much goes into each fund. And I had started out very conservatively. So that adjustment lowered the levy in the general fund by almost $314,000. Unfortunately, it increased in the rural fund by 43. And it also reduced the debt service by $34,760. By that time, we had gotten our new valuations from the state. And because of that, we... The original amounts in the budget, we had used the maximum amount we could transfer from the general basic levy to secondary roads. That reduced that because our values declined. So that reduced tax actings... Tax askings in the general fund by $25,263. And also, a similar thing in the rural fund to the secondary roads. That reduced that by $47,553. Then together at that time, we were looking at the debt service fund and our local option tax. And I believe we made the choice to stop putting 50% of the local option in the debt service fund and instead would put it directly to secondary roads, which increases the amount we can spend from secondary roads annually because our debt service was declining. So since we were going to be able to put more money into secondary roads from local option, I had suggested reducing the rural levy transfer by 5%, back down to 95% of the eligible. That reduced the tax askings in rural by $144,720. Then we also talked about new position requests. And as a result of that conversation, we reduced one new position requested in the Health Department to be filled with two 24-week temporary positions, saving $39,481 in the general fund. We did authorize filling a dental hygienist position for the Health Department, which the Health Department believes would increase their revenue by about $60,000. So then I brought the property tax askings down by that $60,000. We also... You also really elected to delay the start date for a marketing coordinator new position for half of the year. So that savings is $53,264. And we also talked about using some funding that we have available in the '23 budget to pay the digital marketing projects. So I did reduce the general fund by that. So all those changes brought the general fund tax askings down by $964,000 to $5.3068. The rural levy, we brought down $162,682 to a levy rate of $3.66. And debt service... Got to move something here. We actually brought down by a total of $34,760 to $26.676. So you did make over $1 million in adjustments, you know, from the original budget to the final.
And debt service is anticipated to decrease over the next several years?
Yes. Unless we choose to issue bonds for new projects, it will. There'll be another substantial reduction in 2025. And our... The county property tax-supported portion will be completely paid off by June of 2027 if we don't need to issue new bonds. So we do have some good news that will be coming for future years there. It's a small amount in the overall picture, but it still is a reduction right now.
It was good. All the reductions. So that was great.
So I redid the tax askings. Then now we're using the new valuations. So that changed the picture a little bit. But I also have incorporated all the adjustments we just discussed. That changed our general fund from an increase in tax askings to a decrease. Now, in the general basic levy, because that's capped, we can only get $20,390,694. And that's actually a reduction of 1.7%. And that is because when the new values came out after the law change, that was a reduction in $66 million in value and actually is lower than what we had in fiscal '23. So that was a significant change. We also were able to reduce the general supplemental levy. So the new taxes there will be $10,000, $10,526,301, a total reduction of 2 1/2%. And that makes our total countywide levy a reduction in collections of 2% now. And the rural basic levy, unfortunately, we were not able to reduce it as much, but it did come down substantially. It's just a smaller fund. So the percentage is large, the dollars are smaller. So the new rural levy tax askings are $3,531,958. Unfortunately, still an increase of 5.2%. So the total... Had we had this all done by the time we published the maximum hearing, we would have been at a reduction of 1.3% overall. Still would need a supermajority, though, because the rural levy is still increasing by more than 2%. And then the debt service levy, on the next page, you can see that we're asking for $1,736,443 in taxes. And that is a reduction of 11.7% this year, even with moving the local option tax out of there.
What if we don't get a supermajority for the rural basic levy? Then what... How much can we collect?
We would have to work at... I would ask you to keep voting until you got comfortable with the number, actually. Because you would have to cut another $106,000, which is... There really isn't a lot in the rural levy. And in fact, maybe I'll switch over and... Let's go back up to that. So we have the sheriff's office there, and that is the cost of 21 deputies. I did look at that this morning. Most of them at 75%. We do charge the general levy for 25% of the cost to most of those deputies. And also, that is where our share of the consolidated dispatch costs are, which are increasing nearly double because of the changing to the property valuation method of cost allocation. So that's where your big increases are in the rural fund. Then we have a few costs in the board agencies. That makes up the rural libraries, some other joint things, our emergency management association costs, Northeast Iowa Response Group, just a few things that impact rural only that are included in that. Then we have our large budget for paying township trustees of $550. And then we have the transfer to secondary roads. And you can see that we transfer in 50% of the local option tax dollars are appearing here to help reduce that. So the rural levy, we are, you know, trying to reduce that with those. So there isn't... There really aren't a whole lot of options in there for just reducing that budget. You, of course, could elect to, but it would be painful ones, I would suggest.
I know you haven't got to the valuation statements yet. But at last night's meeting, Michelle did present these amounts to the Farm Bureau. And you may want to speak to that, but there were no comments or questions or surprises. They were quite comfortable with it.
I was pleasantly surprised. I was expecting some conversation, I guess. And I'll show you that now on this as we walk through the tax askings here. You can see now our overall tax rate is $9.23897. That's an increase of less than 1%, 0.8%. And the rural is down to an increase of 3.77% in the rate to 3.66540. So interestingly, for a residential property, and I'm sure you all planned this on purpose, but for residential property, the taxes are virtually the same. Down 34 cents, depending on rounding. But a rural residential property, though, will have an increase of $8.77. And this is all based on $100,000 of assessed value. That... I do that because it helps people. They might know the value of their own home, and I figure they can do the math easier on $100,000. So you can see the rollback has been reduced. This was the change the state made. We were at 56% of a home being taxable, and now it's 54.65%. So that was the big change that costs the $66 million. So regular residential down, rural residential up slightly. Commercial and industrial property, both down slightly by 1% and saving them about $5 on each $100,000 of taxable. And they actually may be... And they actually may be a little lower than that. There is a very complicated change in the law that causes commercial and industrial property now, the first approximately 150,000 of value will be taxed at the residential rollback rate. So instead of 90% rollback, it's at 54. But I didn't attempt to illustrate that because previously they were able to apply for a business property tax credit. Now it's coming out of the taxes and it, I thought it'd be cleaner just to, to talk about it at the 90% rollback level. The ag property is the one that sees a significant increase. That's partly because their rollback increased. So more of their property is taxable this year than last year. So they're paying taxes on 91.64%, plus they have the increase in that rural levy. So for 100,000 of ag property, their taxes would go up $30, $30.56. And then again, multi-residential, their, their reduction increased because their rollback went from 56 down to 54. So they will save $54 or 15%. And I think that's, that's pretty much everything I was going to talk about today. So unless you have questions or further discussion.
Michelle, I got one question. I don't really know how to put it term wise. Obviously, this is the maximum. In a few weeks here or near future, we're going to be adopting our budget, which would be much lower. Could you determine if the board was to change something in the budget between now and then? How much difference would be between that and this maximum levy?
Sure. Yep, I could do that for you. And you can see, I'll just show you right now. So at the, at the revised amounts that we will be, that you've already decided on that we'll be talking about at the, at the hearing, we have reduced, it's a reduction of 449,000. So a reduction of 1.3% based on our original, which if we go back and look at the original, that was an increase of 2.29% or 796,000. So you, you've made substantial changes already. And if you direct me to make more, yes, I can provide you with how that would change. It will, I'm hoping to publish it based on what I'm showing you today. If, if we want, if you want me to hold off, we can do that, but we'd have to have the hearing later.
But you're talking about publishing the maximum levy today, right?
Actually, now this gets confusing. So the maximum levy information was published in the paper already because I have to have it out there for 10 days before the hearing and we're having the hearing today. Then before we can have the final hearing, I have to have that published for 10 days. So I am hoping that's going to be in the papers this Thursday. That is the plan.
So if the board was to make any changes, it'd have to be done this week?
Well, you can change them even after I publish, as long as we go down. I can't increase anything once I publish it in the paper in terms of either tax rate or amounts per program. So for example, if you wanted to switch money from public safety to health, just as an example, we, we couldn't really do that after I've published because we couldn't have an increase in one. So is that about as clear as mud? It's, it's, it's complicated to explain sometimes.
It is. Did that answer your question, Tom? Or did it help?
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking about something. It would be an increase. It wouldn't have been a decrease.
Yeah, as long as we're doing decreases, we can do that. I would, I would appreciate getting the numbers before the hearing day. It's hard to do all that on the spot because it does change. If I, if I do it all the way through, it does change the allocation of the commercial industrial rollback and the business property tax credit rollback. So it, it just, it'd be nice to have a little time to do that. But we can do it right up to the time it's passed.
As long as there are reductions.
Yep, as long as there are reductions.
Is there, are there any other questions for Michelle or comments? I was going to say, we can close the hearing. I think it's been moved and seconded. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. The resolution that the maximum property tax dollars for general county services, 31,881,517 dollars and rural county services, 3,687,840 dollars be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. She's thanking us.
I was, thank you.
All of you that worked on this. Okay, great. Item E, motion to direct the finance director to advertise for a public hearing on the proposed Blackhawk County budget for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 to be held on March 28th, 2023 at 9:05 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Because I, I'm nervous about this, only because the Courier has not confirmed yet that they can publish this week. So if they don't, I will have to come back next week and ask to reschedule that for, for later. But right now, I'm hopeful they'll, they will do that.
Yep, okay. So that's just kind of a warning, nothing you want to change. All right, let me just, so, thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully we'll be good, but.
Super. You're all right, Grant? Okay. Item F, resolution to direct the finance director to open a new special revenue fund known as the Local Option Sales Tax Fund, Fund Number 167.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, oh, please answer as your name is called.
Treoka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item 11, will be moving into a closed session. Is there a resolution to proceed into closed session for discussion of information concerning physical and/or critical infrastructure, security, security procedures, and emergency preparedness where disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize county property?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Thank you.
Fighting for it.
Yeah. I think, Tom, did you make the motion?
I think, I think Dan and I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you seconded.
Yep.
I had it down. It's just making the motion and Dan seconding.
Okay, because I thought Tavis thirded it. Yeah, so we're good.
Tavis spoke. He must have been too quiet.
Yeah. Thank you for your patience. I knew we had to do it today. So how, depending on how long our meeting was, you were going to be here, right?
Right. That's what I could assume it.
Super.
Um, I have three votes. Are you guys ready to do this?
We are.
Of course.
Thank you, guys.
Duty calls.
So we also want to peer up with the supervisor. Doesn't matter. This is your first time. So it's pretty straightforward, but you'll just peer up, probably you and Russ. And then, so what we're doing is just matching the results that I uploaded into our election report to match, which happened, it was printed off of the tape. She guys are then double checking to make sure that it matches, so. We just have one person read. So this is the results from the election that I uploaded. And you'll just be looking at the polls.
I know what you're talking about. Now that's the one.
All right. I'll give you that print there.
I don't have it. They, I, I.
Easy.
Does one of them need to be at the supervisor's? Or can we get started?
I mean, I might have a.
All right, and I'll do it with Michelle on.
Central Christian.
You want me to rearrange my mess here, huh?
All right.
Maybe if you just wanted to pull it down by, then Michelle wouldn't have to move.
Yep. Yep.
Absentees or?
No, that's a separate book. We got vote center to Crossroads Community Church.
All right, sorry about that, Marty. I'll, I'll.
Votes cast, 145.
Yep.
Yes votes, 130. No votes, 15.
Yep.
You gonna read? All right. Oh, sure, I'll read. All right, let's see here. Bear with me. It's been a little bit.
So am I off the hook?
Okay, so all I need to do is I need to give you the.
Yes.
Okay, so all I need to do is protect account and all the numbers asked for that.
Yep.
You can just get a total balance cast and then you can just read down.
All right. Total, 26. Marshall, all right, just give you the numbers. Yep, 5, 18, 0, 0, 1.
All right. St. Paul's.
19, 7.
Yep.
All right. And that is, oh, I have, nope, there's one more, there's one. All righty.
All right.
This is the same one. Okay.
37 cast.
Yep.
26 yes.
Don't do it often enough, that's for sure.
No, there's just other two and a half zeros.
All right, Good Shepherd.
All right.
132 cast.
24, 30.
30 for Marshall.
Yep. Yep.
Two right ends.
All right.
And then, do you have Hawkeye?
Oh, yes, yep.
95 yes, 27 no.
Correct.
I knew you said absentee was.
Or maybe the other directions. This is in order.
All right, we got City Hall.
118, 16, 134.
96 total cast.
Yep.
15 Marshall.
Yep.
42 Creighton Smith.
Yep.
One right end.
Uh huh.
76 yes.
Yes.
16.
Wait till these meetings are short.
Last one. Oh, that's my polling location.
I think it's.
Payne, AM.
22, 74.
Yes, it's very easy.
Uh, total cast, 133.
Uh huh.
Lawrence, Marshall, 40.
Yep.
Creighton Smith, 88.
Yep.
HCC.
Yes votes for HCC, 93.
171, 9, 180.
Yes votes, 9.
All right. All right.
See, I almost.
I'm like, oh my God, it's the first, first time that somebody's ever did it. Very small. Do I have surprises?
94, 11, 105. Is that it?
I'm going to grab an extra pen to speed this up.
No, that's, that's all I wonder. Huh, okay.
Doug, you heard her, school district, this is the district that's involved in elections, just that we only have that small.
144, 20, 165.
Oh, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, I was going to want to detail about that. In fact, I can tell it should have to record down this.
And finally.
Yeah. Different.
There's an exception.
187.
Dunkerton is 24, yes.
All right.
Yep.
Then this HCC, Wopsey, is 0.
Not very many.
No, that wasn't.
HCC Denver, 0, yes, 5, no.
Man, though, I can't wait till these meetings are short again.
I know, I was just going to list some other stuff while I had enough.
All right.
Port City. Signatures and all.
Yep, signatures and we're going to have to get on.
Yes, I know. 38, yes, 6, no. And Gilbert, no.
And so it's just worth noting that we did our post-election audit yesterday and it was in my department. They all have that. They were 100%.
Oh, and also, Madam Chair, there were no provisional ballots.
Oh, no, it is. For the minute. For the minute. Gilbertville, 100, yes, 15, no. By public measure, 97, yes, 38, no.
No, it's just simple.
Yeah, sometimes it's me.
I gotta ask, I gotta make sure I know where do I sign.
Okay, this is, Jessica, it's 8, yes, 1, no.
Actually, I was. 8, yes. Yeah, you can actually sign on there too because. Yeah, because Grant will have his own spot and then Dan can sign.
I believe so. I got it right.
Okay, 8, yes, 1, no.
Get your card figured out.
Like this absentee is it, so it's just like, okay.
Time to think about my car feeling like.
Please, the individuals. Lawrence, Marshall, 9. Right end, 0, 0.
And you have to.
Gilbertville, 3, yes, 0, no. HCC.
Yes, I sign as.
BC.
I had to.
5, 10, no, 46.
We're going to have.
All right, dude.
Like, that's the least of things I can do. Yeah, yeah, they've got, yep, they'll be back.
While you're still together, I've got a little resolution on my side.
Wasn't all that old, right? Actually, 2015. It used to have the fuel, the old one.
Okay, yay.
And then what I'll do is I'll go to the board office.
Absolutely.
To make sure I have access to.
All those six places that we're in an opioid with? Okay. Sure. So. Signatures are done for you, Karen? Or, oh, that, not quite. Okay, you can go ahead. We'll stay after and adjourn or should we wait?
You can go ahead.
Okay, I was going to say, any reports or information from the board?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just share a few things.
Time out.
Oh, first we got a.
We have not voted on the resolution.
All right. Oh, sorry. Please answer as your name is called. Thank you. If you're ready, Grant.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item 13, any reports or information from the board?
I'll too, uh, share two things really quick. First was, um, we had a meeting of the Upper Cedar River Watershed Management Authority last week. And, um, a lot of the smaller communities and, or different communities vented their frustration on the state not being enough of a partner. And so, um, not sure it will do much good, but they're all drafting a letter that they're sending to the state legislature to try and get them to approve, including a watershed manager for each watershed, um, in the state and not leaving that up to local budgets. And once they have that drafted, I'll send that around to all of you. So if you want to, you can sign on to it as well. Um, the other thing I wanted to address is that, um, last Wednesday, I was speaking at an LGBTQ rights rally here in town. And, um, I used some language about Councilman Boson that I regret using that was hurtful and it wasn't necessary. The truth is, speaking out about issues of life and death for the LGBTQ community is very hard for me. And it's not something I, I do easily, but I do it out of, out of obligation. And I was speaking directly to some of the issues that took my husband's life. And. life. And, you know, the fact is that I have PTSD from that night, and I'm trying to learn how I navigate life, and as a public figure who has PTSD. And right now, the, the state is facing unprecedented attacks on, on LGBTQ people, and it is putting the lives of people that I love at risk, people that are thinking about having to move out of the state so they can just have the treatment and the care that they need. And so I was speaking from a place, place of passion, a place of anger, and it was very personal with me between Councilman Boson, because I had opened up in a very personal way about the ways that conversion therapy hurt Logan's family, and how that had an impact on his life. And those messages had gone unresponded, and, and I felt ignored. And it hurt a lot personally, because Logan worked very hard to actually elect him. And so that, as I was speaking, I let my personal emotions, you know, get better in me, and I regret using that language. I don't regret being angry about the issues I'm talking about, but I, but I regret using that kind of hurtful language.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Any other reports or information from the board?
One, I'll, I'll try to keep it quick here. I do, Chris, that, that, thank you. I know, we all get passionate. None of us are perfect. I know I've been the same way on issues when I've spoken with Linda, Davis, you, in, in private. I do want to bring back the code of conduct for discussion, just, not as a punishment, and we, because we don't have authority to punish, but more as intervention, behavior modification. And I'd like it to apply to all elected officials. Again, we don't have any authority. Let's face it, we don't have any authority with whatever we decide, if we decide anything. So why should any elected official care? But I want there to be a defined code of conduct, that we can provide intervention for an individual, any one of us. Like I said, none of us are perfect. We engage in something like this, we can, if three of us, three out of the five decide, hey, hey, Dan, listen, you, you know, we'd like you to tone it down, or, or watch your language. Maybe two would say, no, I think Dan has that right. But three could say, well, I don't think he does. And, and the most we could do is say, just don't do it. Censor, in essence. Yeah, there, there's ways to do, you know, public, or even non-public censure in certain, in certain instances, although that's a little limited by open meetings law. But yeah, you're right, Dan, that it, it, there's a defined procedure, and it's a very high bar to me to remove an elected official. But it's, yeah, my recollection on the, on the code of conduct issue was never that it was necessarily dead in the water, but that it, it kind of fell by the wayside, and all these other things quickly consumed its place, and, and it was never really resolved. So.
This kind of recognition of the behavior.
Yeah, recognition of the thing. You know what? And I've mentioned this with many of you too. It surprises me that what elected officials can get away with, quite frankly, because I, some, I joked with everybody in this room, I think, that, man, if that was an employee, they'd be disciplined. But, but I like the freedoms we have as elected officials. We're held accountable to the voters. And I don't believe in impeachment and stuff like that, because the voters get to vote every two, four years, whatever. But actually, I want this to, to be a positive reinforcement, as crazy as that sounds. So if something does happen, the rest of us can intervene and say, hey, Dan, chill out.
I mean, I think it's, look, I think it's tricky.
It is.
Waterloo did it. It was silly season when they did it.
Yeah.
And I'm not real interested in recreating silly episodes that, that don't have real teeth. And so it, it is, is really tricky. I think if we want to have a conversation, you know, amongst, amongst the board of, you know, just what are, what are our expectations? I think that's, that's perfectly fine. You know, maybe a broader conversation to more accurately articulate what are our procedures as a board, I think is also a part of that discussion. I, I, I want to make sure that if we do go into this code of conduct, it's not in response to a singular incident.
Right.
It is, it is having a, taking a step back and saying, what are our priorities as a board of, of, you know, and what, what's our specific intent with creating the language? I'm not opposed to it, but I, but I am very cautious about the sort of censure votes and that sort of thing. That becomes, frankly, just fodder for, for politics. And I think one of the things that's made this body and county government as a whole, frankly, really good, is that it has avoided the politics that we see in a lot of forms of local government. So I'm cautious, but, yeah.
I like what we.
And, and to be clear, the last time those conversations came up, it was about how county employees were being talked to, and how people were being talked to in, in this meeting and stuff. And that's, so, well, I certainly, I regret what I, you know, using that kind of strong, you know, language. It was, you know, not, you know, it was frankly, it wasn't a county matter. It wasn't.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the board?
My commotion to a hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.